So, I will say this, um, okay. I need to tell you guys something. First off, I recorded a bit beforehand, which was me speaking to Rowan again. And the start of chapter two. Um, yeah, that recording got corrupted, so we are missing a bit. Luckily, it's not a lot. Luckily, luckily, it's not a lot. Yeah, so last time, um, so hello, welcome to the beginning of chapter two of our second year at Hogwarts. Um, we missed a bit, that's fine. We're basically talking to, or what did we miss? We're basically talking to Rowan and we figured out a way to to get into the Gryffindor common room, which includes the engorgio, engorgio spell and the shrinking spell, so. We're gonna learn reducio, which is the spell that we need to learn. And then we'll go through the shit. This reducio, we're gonna learn reducio, cuz we're fabulous, of course. Okay, on to wish you luck in today's quidditch match. Thank you. Angelica, lovely name. Though I've never known a Slytherin to wish anyone luck anything, especially in a match against their own house. Love, I'm not really on the team of my house, I only know like four people in my house, and one of them I dislike, and the other one is my prefect. And the other one is my only friend, the only proper friend that I talk to. Although she's kind of the Hermione elf of both of us. Don't be suspicious about this, we're shit. Slytherin can win it on our own merits, which is why I find our plans against Gryffindor so disturbing. I hope you aren't trying to trick me, Luna. Actually, why did you go up to the prefect which you're supposed to outsmart and to gain to the Gryffindor tower? And make her suspicious of you? You're dumb. I don't have patience for anyone who wastes my time. Or threatens my house. Trick her, I can trick her. Trick her, can we trick her? I overheard some Slytherins talking about what they're planning to do during the match. I'm sure they're planning on somehow sabotaging the entrance to their common room. They've done it before, but I'm going to return early from the match and catch them in the act this time. It's worse than that, they're going to cast the full body bind on the Gryffindor seeker during the match. That spell paralyzes victims, she could fall to her death. I'll go tell Professor McGonagall. Good idea, but even Professor McGonagall can't watch every Slytherin in the stands. You need to stay at the match until it ends and help her keep watch. You're right, I need to help protect our seeker. Thank you, Luna, you're a credit to your house. I'm a sneaky bitch, that's my credit to my house. Well, it was lovely talking to you, um. Study session. I hate charm study sessions. Are we gonna do a silly one? Okay. Oh, fuck off, um. One, two, that's five. That's one hour, one hour is two, so five and two, shall we do that? Yeah, we're gonna do that. Welcome to study session in Hogwarts. Nice to see you again, class, today we'll be reviewing the knockback jinx Flapendo, also known as my favorite jinx at the moment. I hope to be knocked off my feet by how far your spell work has come. No, thank you so, you expect so much from us. Please study Flapendo while I prepare for the next lesson. I'm gonna waste all my energies on this, Jesus Christ. Oh, this is gonna be a long thing. Now, what should we talk about? How's your day going? I'm so lovely, I am, yep. Woo, bonus stars. Um. We really need that right now. Luna, pass me the note while the professor isn't looking. I'm an expert at passing notes, I did that in high school. In my first year of high school, I remember I did pass notes quite a lot. Then, as I got older in high school, I didn't as much. Year seven, year eight, oh my god, beautiful years. I acted like a little shit and I still do. Let's review what we previously learned about the knockback jinx. Okay, I'm gonna read a book because I'm intelligent. That may be a lie, we do not know that. Come on, glance, 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 glance. Nefl, have you been keeping up with your studies? Uh, which spell causes objects to swell in size? Engorgio. I'm smart, I'm very smart. This was a spell that we had, this was a question that we had last, last, last episode. If I remember correctly, which I probably don't. Aw, we're back. I am a genius, no I'm not. Rowan, Rowan, let me poke you to death. Oh my god, why is chatting take so much energies? Probably because I can't be arsed half the time. Oh, one more, um. Glance at book, don't fail. Ooh, duh, knowledge. Focus, or we might forget some of the details, focus. Oh, in the middle, in the middle, kids, yes. We're getting there, we're getting there. Study sessions take forever, though, must say. Prepare to cast Flapendo. Oh, we're casting it now. Why don't you demonstrate how much you practice Flapendo? I know how to practice Flapendo, I do it in all the doors. Here we go, we're getting to the act. God. Money. Guess I need it. It's time to cast flitwick. It's time to make flitwick proud, my Flapendo, cast Flapendo. What the fuck? I was following it, you piece of shit. I'm outraged by this, I'm outraged. Nefl, if you have excellent form, would you please help tutor the other students in the knockback jinx? Can I tell them to fuck off? I, Jesus Christ, I fucking followed that? Sometimes I forget that the game is on my phone and that sometimes my phone is a dick and won't trace where my actual finger is. Fucking dick. I'm sure it is. Ah, damn it. Two. Eh. I'm so happy they ha- they updated this, so I can just watch a fucking video to get energies. Of course, it isn't enough, five, five? I'll wait, I don't have enough money, I don't have enough money to do shit. Okay, while we wait. I believe we have some lovely critters to feed while we wait. Magic, okay. Nefl, we always start with you, so we're gonna start with our portal. Can we get names for these one, for these creatures? I need names for our pets. Of course, they're not our actual pets, but they're the closest thing we have to pets. Ooh, okay. Oh yeah. Something interesting that happened, um. I went on a little rant, um, last night I did, which was brilliant. So, basically, basically. I did some shit, that's the basis of it. Basically, last night, I, I was doing shit, as I usually do. Always do shit sometime. So, last time I went down a little like rabbit hole, I think that's how you phrase it, like rat hole. Basically, first off, I was listening to a song called Kogame Kogame, which is a Japanese vocalist song. And it's supposedly, it's supposedly based off like Nazi human experiments on children. This is a great thing to open up with. So basically, I went on a little like search to like see if it was true, only one website confirmed it, so. Wasn't very impressed with that. But hey. So then I just went around a little rant on just like Nazi human experiments, just to see if I can find some more proof. And believe me, I have found some shit, I have read some shits, some messed up shit. Interesting, but messed up. And this is what, and this is what Luna does at like ten PM. At night. I'm not proud of it, but. It's what I do, which is annoying. You're done yet? No. Ah, I'm bug. Oh yeah. Check if there's anything over here. Ooh, anything that I can, ah, yes. Okay, that's cool, okay. Herbology classroom, when do we have herbology? Is it, um, the next year? Transfiguration classroom, okay. So there you go, that's what happened last night, I went on a little rant which people could could call me on as being psychotic. Hagrid's garden. Can I go to Hagrid's garden, please, please, please? Wait, we can go in Hagrid's garden, yes. Oh my god. Hagrid's garden? Oh my god, there is a lot of, he has rats. I can't do shit here, okay. That's annoying. I can't get more energy, shit. Oh. Right, back to this. Wingardium Leviosa, no, we're doing Flapendo. Money. Demonstrate might help you. Sometimes I hate my phone. That was very good, Rowan, you need to improve. Very good job, ladies, very good job, I'm very proud. I would get house cup shit. Next star is to complete the study session and get bonus rewards for containing all stars longer study sessions, give bear rewards. Collect. Oh yeah, we need to check on the house cup. Oh, we're first place, fuck yeah. I'm in second with Jasmine, Jasmine King in front, okay. Slytherin is first at the moment, actually, where's Hufflepuff? Hufflepuff is both. Come on, Hufflepuff. I don't mind Hufflepuff or Ravenclaw winning, Gryffindor. Debatable, depends what mood I'm in. I may have a lot of Gryffindor friends, but that doesn't mean I want them to win. I have like three Gryffindor friends, and I have like two Hufflepuff friends, and I have like four Ravenclaw friends. And then I'm just the only Slytherin. It's pretty nice, it's pretty nice. I mostly just hang out with my Ravenclaws, with my Ravenclaw friends the most. Because at least they talk about interesting stuff. Ooh, charm study session. Oh yeah, what was I doing? Yeah, we need to study session. I'm prepared, sir. It's me, so I'm not always proud, but I'm prepared at the moment. Flapendo review, nice to see you again, class, today we'll be reviewing the knockback jinx Flapendo. I hope to be knocked off my feet by how far your spell work has come. This whole thing is just. This whole video is just gonna be me doing study sessions, isn't it? I can already tell. That's three, that's five, okay, we'll take our luck. Ha ha. Oh yeah, I think I also mentioned it, mentioned meh, I also, I think I mentioned this. But one of my Hufflepuff friends is a Slytherin puff. So she is kind of a bit Slytherin, but mostly Hufflepuff. Basically, my friend, we will call her, um, Lulu. That's her normal nickname for me, Lulu. Um, yeah, basically, at my school, we had, we had forms, we had four forms. So my genius brain, um, made it basically categorize the forms and what Hogwarts house they are. Of course, the form that I was in was the Slytherin form, and we had like some of the most athletic people, but we were very lazy, but we were also very sort of like cunning in a way. And then. And then the other forms were selected, so my, the one with my Ravenclaw friend was the Ravenclaw form, which was correct because most of the smart people went there. Smart people athletically and everything, just the high achievers there. Then my Gryffindor friend, Lee, we'll say, um, she was in the Gryffindor form. Which I agree with strongly because, oh my god, I hated her form a lot. And the last one was the Hufflepuff form. Now, of course, my friend, um, Lulu, Lulu, was in my form. Which was great. What does Kallak Portus do? Portus. Portus means like, oh, Jesus Christ. Now we're concealed too. Yeah, as I was saying, my friend Lulu. She was in my form and, okay, on the outside, you can immediately say that she is a Hufflepuff. She looks like a Hufflepuff, she acts like a Hufflepuff, she is such a little. My best interpretation of my friend is that she is an evil teddy bear. Because on the outside, she's very like cuddly, fluffy, very like cute and all that, but on the inside, she is an evil little shit. She can be the most evil little shit alive. You have excellent form, will you help tutor? So basically, me and my friends, it became like a running thing that our friend Lulu was literally the devil incarnate. Because, oh my god, once you get that girl started, she will not stop. So that became like a running sort of gag within our group, it did. So that became like a running thing in our group. Do I have enough? Demonstrate. Do I have enough? No. We're gonna be waiting here, so might as well talk, what events do we have? Hmm, brilliant, collect. I don't know what it'll do, what can that do? Help Hagrid out, these notebooks are used to adopt creatures in the magical creature reserve. We can check that out, well, they're busy doing that. I pressed on the wrong thing, I'm a genius, wait, what? Complete year two, chapter six to play Quidditch and participate in tryouts. If I did Quidditch, I would either be a beater. Or not play at all. I just wanna hit someone in the face. Transfiguration. Prepare to. Porcupine to pincushion. Spongefy. Revelio, keep up the good work and you'll be able to complete Revelio. Oh yeah, there are rewards. Achievements. Join the Weavers' sister onstage for their premiere performance. Hosting, the special guest will soon be arriving. Soon you'll be, you'll have an opportunity to befriend a coyote. Cheer, befriend, cheer. Christmas at the burrow. Stay tuned for the special invitation to spend Christmas with the Weasleys. Imagine playing Quidditch, a comet broom for your own, soon you'll have your chance. The Quidditch Cup, uh, meet the Malfoys. Wait, I can meet the Malfoys. The Wittingwell's most influential family will visit Hogwarts, pray for the most challenging assignments of all. Rivalry, respect, and wrath, you must prepare for your, you'll soon have a chance to earn Raft's mentorship and learn. Who the hell's Raft? Second Quidditch Cup, special celebration of Hogwarts teachers. Special assignment means you'll be getting to know over a spirited game. Ooh, okay, interesting. Yes, so, yes, we learn herbology in next year. We haven't done any potions yet, or any flying. First laps, weaving, potions, vibrating potion, strengthening potion, fire protection potion, and swelling potion. I'm just laying these lot, do their shit, there you go. Good girls. Oh my god. Yeah. Oh yeah, we're gonna look at the reserve. Or by clothes, I am not sure what I'm doing. Yeah, the magical creature reserve. I wanna see if there's any of them that are available to us at the moment. So no. I keep, I keep like, like having like a lookout for like um, what we can afford to get. There are fairies in here, right? Ah, there they are, we only need three more and then we can get the fairy. Hmm, shall we get the fairy? Oh, the boatruckle. Oh, the hippogriff. That's gorgeous. Well, screen dragon. Yeah, no. No. So we're like three points close to getting, um, the fairy. Which is good. Let's do this. How do I get you? Oh yeah, guys, I did win that event. Where is it? I did win that event, so I got the, so I got the surprises, yeah, yeah. Doesn't that look beautiful? Why, that wears the hair, where's the hair, there's the hair. Just, just, just look at this, it's so pretty. This is probably my favorite outfit so far. Only because it's so me, I would, I would wear this in real life. And the hair is gorgeous. I love the beauty, it's so pretty. Hmm. I was debating keeping the hair, cuz it looks great on everything. I might keep the hair as it is, but it's glitching through shit. Which isn't nice, it only doesn't glitch through these. But it's not like anyone's gonna see the back, so. I might keep the hair as it is. And of course, we have glasses, because I wear glasses in real life. Look at my face. I'm just playing around with this. You know, we're gonna fill cheeks. I fucked everything up, didn't I? Yes, I did. Let's go to eyes, oh yeah. Here we go. To be honest, I prefer it like that. Do we have anything else? Oh yeah, we can't. Hmm, and we don't have any pets. God, you guys are getting some long episodes today. Yeah, I didn't apologize for like giving you guys these long episodes now. Even though it does make the video look a lot more, oh my god, I need that. If you guys don't know, I have a huge love for anything Halloween themed. I literally have the most love for Halloween themed shit, I love it so much. That's cute, no. That's cute, no. Oh my god, you're cute, I love it, I love it, I want it, I want it so bad. It's so cute. As you can tell, I have an addiction. Oh my god, it's so cute. Yeah, I have an addiction to Halloween themed shit. We're gang this. Take all my money, oh my god, I look so cute, oh my god. Why are you adorable? Why? Just, just, just why? I've literally spent ages doing this. Yay, we won shit. Ooh, they've actu- oh, they've actually added shit on here. Because previously, it didn't have all of this on, previously. Ooh, and they're not the same rewards as well. Interesting, interesting, oh, bigger gaps as well. I look so cute. I'm not gonna deny it, I like fucking adorable. That's in our collection now, okay. Oh yeah, when we, when Rowan first talked about the prefect, I thought she meant, um, Bill Weasley. But no. Which is a huge shame. That took so much time, why did this take so much time? Demonstrate. Right, okay. Petite perfection. Gorgeousness. And we're watching this again. Yay. Yay. Collect. Yeah, we need to adopt the fairy to win some shit here. Win twenty five duels, ooh. I'm actually close to doing that. I know I got that, it's gorgeous, I know, it's absolutely fabulous. This means that next chapter, we'll be able to do the reducio lesson. And move on. Hmm, yeah, we need to up, up our courage like a lot. I mean a lot, I mean a lot. Okay. Well, that's it for this episode of Harry Potter Hogwarts Mystery. Hope you guys enjoyed and see you guys next time. Bye.